We're live.
Live, guys.
All set? Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call out a recess Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petition 20P-1558, South Dixon Solar LLC's request for a special use permit to construct a solar energy system in South Dixon Township here in Lee County. I always remind people, in case you've forgotten and you're just listening on your phone, that the Zoom ID or on YouTube, your Zoom ID is 915-3923-9154, and the password is 209840. And those, that ID and password remain the same throughout the course of this hearing. As to YouTube on your computer or cellphone, use your browser. Go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County Ill, short for Illinois, Zoning Board of Appeals. You don't need to be concerned with upper or lowercase letters. Find the session date, which presumably you're watching because you're going to want to watch tonight's, December 8th, December 8th, 2020. Fill the box with that, and voila, you should be seeing and hearing us. If you have technical questions, you're having difficulty, feel free to call zoning officer Duffy's helpline at 815-973-3449. As I look around the room, tonight, we have present in the old Lee County Courthouse courtroom, all members of the, all honorable members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Chairman Forster, Vice Chairman Burrow, Mr. Bothy, Mr. Hughes, and Mr. Meyer. Dee Duffy is around, but because of the mitigare, the COVID mitigation tier, she is not in the courtroom. The Stute State's Attorney, Mr. Boonstru, is also present, but he is not in the courtroom. Mr. Berry is here, representing the petitioner along with one of the petitioner's representatives. Our IT specialist Alice is here. Our fine court reporter is here, himself is here. And once again, that makes 10 people in the space, which meets the governor's phase, I'm not sure if it's phase three or tier three restrictions, and I'm told that there are three people in what used to be the rear jury deliberation room, a big jury room, which, in which 10 people could space socially distance at six feet, but there are only three people back there this evening. All right. Appreciate it if everyone would either turn your cellphones off, or at least to silent, just a reminder. And that's all my housekeeping business. And Mr. Berry, that's the handoff to you to continue your client's presentation.
Thank you, Judge Slavin. I'd like to call Jennifer Klingshirn as a witness.
Jennifer, if you can hear me, I hope, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth, old truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You may end quiet, Counselor.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Klingshirn. Could you please state your name for the record?
Jennifer Klingshirn.
And could you spell your last name for the court reporter, please?
Yes. K.L.I.N.G.S.H.I.R.N. Klingshirn.
Thank you. Could you tell us a little bit about your background, please?
Yes. I am with Energy Renewal Partners. My title is Senior Project Manager. And there I specialize in renewable energy development with regard to environmental studies as well as natural resources. As an environmental consulting firm, Energy Renewal Partners, or ERP, has partnered with Duke Energy Renewables, the project developer for the proposed South Dixon Solar project. We have partnered with them for over 10 years, developing successful renewable energy projects through development, construction, and operations. Additionally, my focus is in environmental site studies, particularly in regards to streams and wetlands, cultural resources, protected wildlife. Additionally, my job is to help identify environmental project constraints and seeing them through, and to identify and implement avoidance and minimization efforts as well. Additionally, I have completed regulatory consultation throughout the US. For those agencies in the state of Illinois and which have oversight over the project, I have experience with federal agencies such as the US Fish and Wildlife Service and the US Army Corps of Engineers, as well as state agencies such as the Illinois Department of Natural Resources and Soil and Water Conservation Districts.
What's your educational background, Ms. Klingshirn?
My educational background, I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Sciences and a minor in Physical Anthropology.
Thank you. Have you previously evaluated wildlife, environmental soil, vegetative, and wetlands issues for solar energy projects?
Yes, I have.
And have any of those been in Illinois?
Yes, I have been involved in the development process of over 150 solar energy projects, and approximately 10 of those have been within the state of Illinois.
Are you familiar with the wildlife and environmental studies prepared for the South Dixon Solar project?
Yes. Duke Energy has commissioned several environmental wildlife studies and other natural resource studies for the South Dixon Solar project to date. These studies are completed as part of a developer's due diligence to actively identify, evaluate, identify and evaluate potential project constraints to ultimately design the project to avoid and/or minimize impact to wildlife and natural resources.
Okay, thank you. I believe you have a slide deck, so maybe we could put that on the screen. And I'd ask everyone who has a copy to turn to page two, please.
Yes, apologies. I thought it was in the room. I can share that now.
Just give us a second here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Can you do it? Sure. Thanks, Eric. Yep, so we have, the slides show up on the screen. Can everyone see it? All right. And let's, please advance the slide to slide number two. There we go. So, Ms. Klingshirn, we have page two of the slide deck on the screen if you want to continue through your discussion of the wildlife and environmental issues.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. And as I stated previously, several environmental site studies have been commissioned for the project to date as a part of the project's due diligence efforts. First, we identify existing or potential natural resources that are on the site or within the vicinity of the site. Second, we evaluate what was found in that identification process on a case-by-case basis to understand if those resources could generate a project constraint. And a constraint can be defined in several ways. A constraint could affect the feasibility of the project or could present a significant engineering challenge. A constraint may also be an existing condition which has the potential to have an adverse effect on sensitive, critical, or protected natural resources. Additional constraints may also be implemented at the...
Excuse me, Mr. Klingshirn. Just a minute.
Just a minute.
Having a technical problem.
Having a technical problem.
Oh, okay.
All right, Ms. Klingshirn, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you may continue.
Thank you. The final project constraint I was referring to were defined at the local level, so beyond those that could potentially affect the feasibility of development, those that could have an adverse effect on sensitive, critical, or protected natural resources, there are those additional regulations at the Lee County level which the project is adhering to. Environmental and other project constraints are generally analyzed early and throughout the development of the project, as there are federal, state, and local regulations that must be adhered to with regard to potential impacts to natural resources and protected wildlife.
All right, let's go ahead and advance to slide number three, please. Ms. Klingshirn, was a preliminary wetland and habitat evaluation report prepared for the project?
Yes, in April 2020.
And could you provide an overview of the results of the wetland study, please?
Yes. Regarding streams and wetlands, the project would be designed to avoid infrastructure impacts to streams to the greatest extent practicable, and presently would be designed to avoid impacts to wetlands. In order to identify stream and wetland features on the site, an assessment was completed as part of the preliminary wetland and habitat evaluation report, which was, as stated previously, completed in April of 2020. This study determined that there are streams and wetlands that are located within the bounds of the project. These features are depicted on the site plans presented in the application, as well as in Appendix H, that includes exhibits from that assessment depicting waters assessed during that site visit. Currently, the site plan has been designed to avoid impacts to all streams and wetlands identified in that process to the greatest extent possible. Following planned 2021 studies, additional studies are planned for the new year. The project intends to seek an approved jurisdictional determination from the US Army Corps of Engineers to receive a formal concurrence with that final report next year. At the time, the project, if streams were to be impacted, the project would consult with the court to determine which of those features are jurisdictional and therefore are subject to permitting. And should it be determined that stream crossings would be necessary for the project to connect certain parts of the project, at that time, at this time, the project would qualify for an Army Corps nationwide permit. These are general permits which are issued and approved for impacts that are considered to be minimal. And reiterating again that at this time, presently, wetlands are not anticipated to be impacted by the project.
Thank you. Let's turn to slide number four. And I believe slide number four addresses federally protected species, and maybe you can tell us a little bit about the federal components of the wildlife studies and regulatory consultation that was performed for the project?
Yes. Regarding federally protected wildlife species, the project would be designed to avoid and/or minimize impacts to protected species. This is generally achieved through close coordination with the US Fish and Wildlife Service, the federal agency which oversees the Endangered Species Act, as well as avoiding of impacts, minimization of impacts, and the implementation of construction and operations best management practices, which are generally industry standard practices to avoid and/or minimize impacts to federally protected wildlife species. A habitat assessment was completed for the project as part of the preliminary wetland and habitat evaluation completed in April of 2020. The project would be designed such that no federally listed species would be adversely impacted by the project. Consultation with the US Fish and Wildlife is ongoing as necessary at this time, and similar to the stream and wetland assessment, additional onsite studies are planned for 2021. Just a general overview of potential best management practices and coordination that, within the industry, is very standard, that would be implemented to either avoid and/or minimize impacts to federally listed species. Those could include taking into account the movement of small mammal species, such as foxes, rodents, raccoons, other small mammal species, that the movement of those species in and around the site can be supported with elevation, fences elevated approximately six inches to allow for passage of the smaller species. So that's an example of an avoidance measure which could be implemented. Additionally, through consultation with the US Fish and Wildlife, it is very typical to see requirements from the office to complete presence-absence surveys and clearing of trees outside of specific seasons in order to limit or minimize impact to federally listed species. So those are just some examples of industry standard practices.
Okay, that addressed federally protected species. Let's move to the next slide. And I'm going to ask you to address state protected species. And to that extent, are you, I'm going to ask you if you're familiar with the ECOCAT application filed by the project with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources?
Yes, that is included as Appendix Q to the application.
And maybe you can tell us what an ECOCAT application is?
Yes. So in regards to state protected species, the project is required as part of the Lee County ordinance to initiate a natural resource review consultation with the state office that oversees the state protected species, which is the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. That consultation is completed by initiating a review through the department's ecological compliance assessment tool, or ECOCAT. The request was submitted through that portal, and a response was received from the IDNR through the ECOCAT. That response is included as Appendix Q to the application as stated previously. The response from the IDNR, which is an official response, states that there are no record of the following items, including state-listed threatened or endangered species, Illinois natural area inventory sites, dedicated Illinois nature preserves, or registered land or water reserves on site. And the response indicated within the letter received that consultation is terminated.
And just to make it clear, the Department of Natural Resources found no expected impact on threatened or endangered species, correct?
That is correct. The Illinois Department of Natural Resources determined that there is no anticipated impact on state listed species.
Thank you. Let's move to the next slide. Ms. Klingshirn, was there a preliminary cultural resource study performed for the project?
Yes.
And are you familiar with that study?
Yes, I am.
Can you tell us about the study and its results, please?
Yes. The preliminary cultural resource investigation was completed in April of 2020. That study found evidence of historic sites within the bounds of the project. The recommendation within the conclusions of that report recommended those historic sites for some additional testing in those particular areas. A formal Phase One level site survey is expected to be completed prior to land disturbance activities on the site, and consultation with the state Historic Preservation Office or SHPO office is, will be completed as necessary in addition to that formal Phase One level site survey as required. Additionally, there are other permits which may trigger the need for additional cultural resource review. Typically, for a solar development project, this would be the US Army Corps of Engineers permitting discussed above. Should an Army Corps permit for those minimal impacts to jurisdictional streams, if that is required, then additional site work would be likely necessary within those areas of impact as well, and that would be evaluated further down the development line once it is determined, once a jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps is received and there is consultation with them, if it is determined that a stream, jurisdictional stream, would be impacted by the project.
And by the way, Ms. Klingshirn, is a Phase One archaeological survey, in your experience with approximately 150 solar projects, is that a pretty common study that's done for solar projects?
It is, yes.
Okay, let's move to the next slide, please. And this slide addresses the the natural resources information screening that was performed for the project, correct?
Yes.
Are you familiar with that NRI screening that was performed for the project?
Yes.
Okay, can you describe that screening and tell us who did it?
Yes. Per Section L of the Lee County Ordinance that pertains to a land evaluation site assessment, a LISA, that is required per the ordinance, familiar with that section of the ordinance? This ordinance was developed by Lee County. It provides a framework through which utility scale solar projects can be developed. And as part of that, a review of natural resources is completed by the Soil and Water Conservation District, in this case, the Lee County Soil and Water Conservation District, to produce that land evaluation site assessment that is required for the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Are you familiar with Section L of the solar ordinance pertaining to the LISA?
I am, yes. The section of the ordinance, as I had stated, provides, the ordinance itself provides for a framework for a project to be constructed. The ordinance itself states, in the ordinance language, that the harvesting of solar energy is not incompatible with agriculture. I'm also familiar with the fact that the, this portion of the ordinance, Section L, states that the Lee County Board must not follow the LISA system blindly, but that the project should be reviewed as a whole. It is also my understanding that Lee County is an agricultural county. It is also my understanding of Lee County and the ordinance put in place that this was developed and implemented where, in a county where approximately 90% of the land is considered to be prime farmland. The ordinance itself requires a LISA, as I stated, and that is issued through the Natural Resources Information Report, which I can discuss further. So the results of the NRI report were received. The application itself was provided in Appendix V, and the final copy was provided to Dee Duffy today, and a hard copy will be submitted today as well. The results of the NRI report, I can run through those as well. The LISA for the entire project area indicates a score of 81. This is an average score. A LISA was established for each individual parcel and then averaged to the entire project, and that score is 81. According to the Soil and Water Conservation District, prime soils, prime soils are those with a LISA of 75 to 100. Additionally, approximately 88% of the project area was found to be comprised of prime farmland. Comparing that to Lee County in general, the county is comprised of approximately 90% prime farmland, and that's according to the Soil and Water Conservation District. Additional findings of the NRI report provide a review of additional natural resources that the Soil and Water Conservation District reviewed. Regarding cultural resources, none were identified in the report. Regarding woodlands, none were identified in the report. Regarding preserved or recognized ecological sites, none were identified in the report. And regarding agricultural areas, no state-designated agricultural areas were identified within the report. Furthermore, it is understood and stated in the Lee County Ordinance that solar energy is not incompatible with agriculture, and that solar developments are considered to be a temporary use, meaning that this is a use that can ultimately be returned to prime farmland after the life of the project.
All right, thank you. Let's turn to the next slide. Ms. Klingshirn, are you familiar with the Lee County Solar Ordinance's requirements with respect to weed and grass control and vegetation plan?
Yes. A copy of the submitted weed and grass control and landscape plan is included with the application as Appendix L.
And can you tell us a little bit about that plan, please?
Yes. The ordinance in Sections E2E and E2G outline the requirements for a weed and grass control and landscape plan for the project. The summary of that plan I have included here. The project will utilize a seed mix that is regionally appropriate, that will include grasses and forbs and other low-growing species with solid, stable root systems and generally rather deep root systems. The ground cover will provide for growing system pollinator habitat, per the plan. Overwintering wildlife habitat, and will provide for increased soil health and stabilization. Again, those forbs and grass species generally have deeper root systems, which will provide for soil stabilization and overall soil health throughout the life of the project, as the soils will not be disturbed once the project is in operations. Those grass and forb species would be maintained through regularly scheduled maintenance that could include spot mowing or weeding. Another portion of the plan outlines invasive species. Invasive species would be controlled, as outlined in the plan, and those weeds which were identified as invasive were obtained from the Illinois Wildlife Action Plan Invasive Species Campaign. Those are outlined in the plan as well. And additionally, annual inspections will also take place per that plan.
All right, thank you. Let's go to the last substantive slide, please. And this slide references the... And this slide references the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement, or AMA, which we've talked about, I believe, in both the previous nights. Are you familiar with the AMA that the project has entered into with the Illinois Department of Agriculture?
Yes, I am. A copy of the executed AMA is in Appendix U.
Okay, again, can you tell us about some of the AMA requirements and provisions, please?
Yes. The AMA itself is specific to solar energy development. It was developed at the state level, specific to solar, understanding that solar energy developments are a temporary use, are compatible with agriculture, and put in place a system for which the project would be constructed in a mindful manner and also decommissioned as well. Due to the general flat topography of the project, it is anticipated that minimal grading would would take place for construction of the project. However, if and where necessary pursuant to the AMA, those graded areas would have the topsoil and organic matter stripped and separated from the subsoil, and temporary and permanent stabilization measures would be implemented for that topsoil in accordance with a state-approved Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is required for the project, which I'll also discuss in one moment. Furthermore, it is understood that the Lee County Ordinance does state that solar energy is not incompatible with agriculture, stating, again, that solar developments are considered to be a temporary use, and that the AMA itself is in place to preserve and/or restore the integrity of the affected agricultural land during construction and decommissioning activities in a solar-specific agreement.
Okay, you just referenced the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or SWIP, as it's known in the industry, or in the construction industry, I should say. Will the project be required to prepare a SWIP?
Yes, it will. Prior to construction, prior to any earth-moving activity, the state of Illinois requires that a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan is approved by the state, as well as a sediment and erosion control plan. These are permitted plans, and they provide for best management practices, structural control practices, permanent stormwater controls and other controls that are approved by the state and localities. It also provides for maintenance and inspection, as well as measures for erosion and sediment control and stormwater management. And yes, that is required prior to earth-moving activities for the project.
All right, thank you, Ms. Klingshorn. Judge Schleven, that's all the questions I have for the witness at this time.
Very good. Mr. Boonstra, if you can hear me, questions of Ms. Klingshorn? Thank you. How about you, Ms. Duffy? Members of the ZBA, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Forster, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Burrow?
Ms. Klingshorn, where is your company located?
Our company, our main office is in Austin, Texas, and we have satellite offices in Charlotte with personnel who are based out of Sweetwater, Texas, as well as Blackwell, Oklahoma, and in Michigan as well.
Okay. You mentioned all these studies. Have you or your associates personally done these studies, or are these studies that other agencies have done that you were referring to?
Duke Energy commissioned Burns MacDonald to complete the studies. As an environmental professional, as a scientist with certification for wetland delineation, I have reviewed the reports. I have found that they are typical in their results, and the methodologies employed are both industry-standard and are regulatorily correct.
Even though the company is not building in the wetlands or some of these areas that have creeks, were those areas also included in the studies too, as far as species and that type of thing, do you think?
The the studies so far include a wetland assessment, as well as a habitat assessment that was completed in one deliverable, in one report. So yes, they would have been studied simultaneously, species, wetlands, and streams in the same report.
It was mentioned in a couple of the studies that they will be going, ongoing studies. Is that something your company will be doing, then?
We will be supporting Duke Energy in the continued regulatory consultation with federal, state, and local agencies.
Is there any other work that your company will be doing then, after this is constructed, or is your job done at that time, at construction time?
Again, we will, we are going to continue to support Duke in site studies and regulatory consultations as requested by Duke.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
No questions.
Mr. Bothy. Mr. Meyer.
What kind of historic sites were found?
These historic sites are generally defined as those which are, you know, 1950 or prior. In this region, they're typically associated with agricultural structures and agricultural activities surrounding residences and in the vicinity of those types of practices.
No other questions. All right. Interested parties, let me look at the Zoom screen. If you folks remember how to raise your hand, you go to the bottom of the screen, click on the words, the word, participant, then there should be an icon that appears that with a, I think it says hand raised, but at least got a hand. Click on that, and we should see your hand raised. If you're teleconferencing, keep on the phone, but hit, go to the keypad and hit star or asterisk nine, and we should see your hand raised. Okay, I can see in the upper left, and I just, folks, I just go from left to right on top, going down. So Jamie? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
And I have to go through it every night because my memory's not that good, and we're making a record anyway. So you live on the edge of the proposed development, is that correct?
I live right in the middle.
Right in the middle, I'm sorry. All right, questions of Ms. Klingshorn?
I'm going to apologize if I butcher your last name.
That's okay.
My first question is, what protected species were found within the borders of the project? Or boundaries?
Yes. The initial studies with consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife indicated that for federally-protected species, which consultation is ongoing, species included several federally-protected bat species, which is very common for the Midwest, as well as two federally-protected plant species, one of which is only found within wetland areas, and one of which is only found within prairie. So the project at this point is not going to be impacting those wetlands. There is no prairie habitat that was identified on the site. And for the two federally-listed bat species, that consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife is ongoing, and it typically includes, I mentioned previously, clearing trees outside of specific seasons in order to avoid impacts, or just regular, you know, consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife to determine if there would be any impacts to the species, and there are no adverse impacts anticipated for either of those protected bat species.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is, are you familiar with the farmland preservation policy adopted by the Lee County Board on May 19, 1998?
I am not familiar with the specifics of that, no.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Jennifer Lawson, can you hear me, Jennifer? Jennifer, are you there?
Can you hear me?
There we go. Very good. Remind us, Jennifer, where you live in relation to this project?
Adjacent to.
Within a mile and a half?
Easily.
Okay, thank you. Questions of Ms. Klingshorn?
Are you aware of the waterways that are located throughout the project area, Three Mile and Five Mile Branches?
Yes, I am aware they were evaluated as part of the preliminary waters assessment.
So have there been studies to determine what type of waterfowls are in that habitat?
I'm sorry, you broke up, did you say waterfowl?
Correct.
For waterfowl, the majority of waterfowl are not a protected species. In our initial evaluations, a typical constraint is looking at areas that could be considered a quote-unquote ecological attractor, and those are large water systems, ponds, rivers, lakes, unique features that could attract unique wildlife. At this time, there are no known impacts to protected waterfowl, and therefore, there are no additional plans to study that at this time.
Okay, are you aware of what is called the lake effect with large solar projects?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, which would in turn impact waterfowl?
Is that a question?
No.
Okay, let's stick to questions, please.
It wasn't. Okay, are you aware of the migration of the monarch butterfly?
I am.
Okay, where the monarch butterfly is on the endangered list?
I am familiar with the monarch butterfly, yes.
Are you aware that they're on the endangered list?
I am aware.
Okay. What studies have been done to show the effects of a large solar project on the migration patterns of monarch butterflies?
The consultation that is required of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, which oversees the Endangered Species Act, which would protect the monarch butterfly, the consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife completed for the project and is required of any development, is completed through the, is called the IPAC system, and that is the Integrated System for Planning and Consultation, and is considered formal consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. That is implemented for any development project that was conducted for this project as well. The monarch butterfly was not a species that was identified as one of the four federally-protected species for the South Dixon Project. Therefore, per the official U.S. Fish and Wildlife consultation, it is determined by the federal agency that the monarch butterfly would not be impacted by the project. The project also intends, per the landscape plan, to implement pollinator habitat, monarch butterflies being one of the greatest pollinators, and one of the furthest-moving pollinators at that, for Mexico. So once the project is in place and the vegetation, the native vegetation and pollinator vegetation is in place, the project itself could serve as a thoroughfare for that species. It would not impact that species.
So that, I guess I'd ask my, that kind of answers my other questions. You are going to be planting butterfly-friendly vegetation within those grass and fobs that you've set?
Correct. Per the vegetation plan, yes, pollinator habitat is habitat, is flowers and forbs, which are attractive to pollinators such as butterflies.
So we are actually members of Pheasants Forever and have several acres, shut up, sorry. Plant, we have several, actually acres of CRP on our property, which is adjacent to the project. What effects does the solar have on pheasants?
To my knowledge, with the consultation that we have completed and is ongoing, therefore, with input from the highest of agencies regarding species, that is ongoing, and it's, you know, would not be impactful per the regulations set forth at the federal or state level.
With the six-foot fences and the barbed wire, what effects does that have on deer and larger mammals? You mentioned small mammals, but not large.
The entire property will be fenced, and it will be fenced for security reasons constantly or monitored. Therefore, it's unlikely that large animals such as deer would enter the project. Otherwise, I don't know, you know, I can't speak to a specific scenario such as that. The intention is that defense is to keep out larger animals such as deer.
Are you aware of the smooth soft-shelled turtle as an endangered in Illinois?
I have not reviewed the full list of Illinois endangered species. I did not review that as part of this project, as it did not, it did not appear on a list that we were to be concerned with.
That specific turtle is, in fact, found in Three Mile Branch. Can you re- revisit the IDNR evaluation of endangered species? That they terminated?
The turtle species is a state-listed species?
Yes, it is.
At this time, the IDNR consultation was, is terminated. The IDNR determined that there would be no impact to state-protected species. That IDNR consultation stands for two years.
Has a solar project of this size ever been rejected, to your knowledge, because of endangered species?
Not to my knowledge. I know of a project that is comparable in size. The project was required to adhere to and complete a plethora of studies in regards to federally-protected species. I believe it was specific surveys and studies for over 20 federally-protected species. So there are, not to my knowledge, has a project of this size been rejected due to its potential to impact protected species. Surveys and best management practices and coordination with federal and state agencies led that project to receive all permits required and was ultimately constructed.
So you had said that DNR had terminated, and they will not revisit it for two years, but if new objective evidence is presented of potential endangered species, can that be revisited?
There is no requirement for the applicant to resubmit that within two years, so.
Then two years.
Right. There is no requirement to, the termination stands for two years per the regulations at the state level.
Okay. I know there was a lot of questions. Thank you, I appreciate it, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy on iPad? First of all, can you hear me, Wendy?
Yes.
Okay. Remind us where you live in relation to the project?
I live in Dixon, approximately two miles.
Okay, great. Questions of Ms. Klingshorn?
Just a couple. I was wondering, your presentation showed that 88% of this project is prime farm ground, and I'm wondering if you feel that's a good idea and that you can in good conscience recommend that? Proceeding with the project, taking that much prime farm ground out of service?
For the, for the purposes of development of the project, the Soil and Water Conservation District determined the 88% mark. Again, that is comparable to the percentage for the entire state, I'm sorry, for the entire Lee County, as well as surrounding counties. As a temporary use, I As a temporary use, I see professionally that the soils overall are stabilized and maintained, and it's rare within the framework of solar energy development to require a project to adhere to an agreement such as the AMA. That is an uncommon agreement for most solar energy development. And that is in place, I believe, through my professional judgment. So, as Illinois is such a farmland and prime farmland-centered state, that the state did recognize that and that that agreement is in place in order to preserve and/or improve the farmland, whilst understanding that the solar development has the potential to take that farmland out of use for a set number of years, and then with the AMA, install the property back to its original state.
Okay, so you think it is a good idea, then?
I do not object to development of a solar energy project on prime farmland. It happens in other states as well.
Okay, well, I'm aware of that. I'm just saying, this is the third project in Lee County.
You're making a speech now. You asked her a question, she answered the question. Trouble with asking questions, sometimes you like the answer and sometimes you don't.
Okay, well, I was making a statement to follow up.
No, you don't make statements. You're not under oath. You're not subject to cross-examination. That's what I explained the other night. That stage is coming.
Okay, well, now I've forgotten the question I was going to ask, so I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie, you've already asked your question, so Mr. Luz, I think, as I look over my shoulder? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Remind us, you live within a mile and a half of a boundary of the project. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead. Questions of Ms. Clinchurn?
Ms. Clinchurn, thank you for joining us. So you studied Five Mile Branch and Three Mile Branch that run through this project?
Correct. Those are included in the waters assessment completed back in April.
You referenced that the cultural resource review was to be done before land disturbance on the site? Was that correct?
That is correct.
Are you familiar with trees being removed along the shoreline of Three Mile Branch currently?
I am not aware.
Is that land under contract currently with Duke Energy? Lease contract that you're aware of?
I am not aware.
Would Duke Energy be paying for the removal of the trees along the bank of that Three Mile Branch?
I can't answer the question. That would be a question for a representative of Duke Energy.
Should that be happening currently on this land as this project is evaluated on that property?
I can't answer that question.
Was there to be no disturbance of the site until the cultural resource review was done?
For the purposes of what is disturbance, that is in regard to an action taken by the project to clear the land and in terms of clearing it for the construction of the project. There are defined definitions of what is considered to be disturbance. I understand your question that tree clearing in the capacity it is taking right now would not, to my knowledge, be considered ground disturbance, triggering a cultural resources review.
Is there plans to widen Three Mile or Five Mile Branch to allow for better flow?
The intent of the project is to impact stream features as little as possible. The only impact or disturbance of the stream would be, should a crossing road or collection be required? Collection would likely, those electrical collection lines would likely be bored underneath the stream. And at this time, it is not known if a road crossing would be required, although it is likely not to be required. So to answer your question, no.
Are you familiar with Eldina Solar LLC?
I am familiar.
What impacts, are you familiar with where that is located then in proximity to this project?
Generally, yes, I am familiar.
What impact on Three Mile Branch and Five Mile Branch might that project have in conjunction with this one?
Cumulative impacts are not assessed. A project is looked at from a stormwater and from a waters impact within those specific localities. That would be perhaps a question to ask of the Duke engineer, who will be testifying, I believe, tomorrow.
Okay.
But overall, there should be no cumulative impact. These are rather small impacts to these features overall.
Okay. Did you study the soil report then that was provided to the county?
I have reviewed the report, yes.
And how many acres on that report were considered Grade A on the PI index? Do you recall?
I don't have the number in front of me. The NRI report will be available for review shortly, I believe, online for your answer.
That has been submitted, then?
It has been electronically submitted to Ms. Duffy, and a hard copy we entered in as well. I can't answer when that would be available for review.
Okay. Are you aware of any increases in lightning strikes within the proximity of a solar array?
No.
Has that been studied?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. On the layout that we saw, it looked as though the fence was being constructed across the waterway. Have you reviewed that layout?
I have.
Site plan layout?
Yes.
And is there going to be fence constructed across the waterways?
The preliminary site plan, the site plan is showing preliminary crossing there. The intent would be to minimize any impacts where possible. Impacts not necessarily being negative, just an impact in general. However, similar to the raising of fences for the movement of small mammals, there is and is frequently utilized stormwater management and stormwater techniques that are implemented, that are very common, that would be placed underneath that fence so as not to impact the stream, but would still qualify as a security for the requirement that a fence is in state for. So there are definitely options when crossing a stream feature for minimizing the actual disturbance or impact to that feature and allowing flow to flow normally.
So in your professional opinion, then you would advise them to construct that fence across and through the waterway?
That has not been decided yet. I don't know.
In your professional opinion, would you recommend that they run parallel to the waterway, perhaps? Waterway being Three Mile Branch and Five Mile Branch?
Many times that is feasible. I do not know in respect to this project that might impact more than just crossing and implementing certain techniques at the headwaters and an outlet of these features. So, I think the site plan as it stands, or if changes are made, that's up to Duke. But both options, I've seen both options in a variety of different projects and in a variety of different locations along the fence lines of projects as well. It's not an either-or, it's a combination sometimes as well.
So wildlife corridors are not of concern to you personally, then professionally, it seems? Is that correct?
They were feasible for the project design and in consultation with state and federal agencies. It is sometimes determined that a specific feature does provide a significant corridor for animals and wildlife species. In those cases, those recommendations would be taken into account. And at this time, the federal consultation is still ongoing. So therefore, I can't answer your question until consultation has been complete.
Thank you. Are you familiar with PFAS, that acronym? Is it a chemical compound? I'm sorry. PFAS, chemical compound, as it relates to solar panels, are you familiar with that?
I am not a civil engineer or familiar with the specific components of the panels. That is not my area of expertise.
Okay, but from an environmental standpoint, you would have concern, correct?
I can't speak to that. I don't have any evidence either way.
So if there was a potentially harmful substance like Gen X chemicals that potentially come off the surface of the panel, and you know, the non-stick surface of the panel were to come off of that and be on the soil there, from an environmental standpoint, you would not have concern? Or you would not have concern for that?
Okay, I'm going to object to the form of the question as a hypothetical. He hasn't established that there's anything to be concerned about in the first place.
I'll let him ask it. Can you ask it again? Do you remember the question, Ms. Clinch? No, wait a minute. I'm sorry. My fault. Ms. Clinchurn, do you remember the question?
I can answer. For the purposes of typical and general solar development, is my understanding that there are limited to no hazardous or chemical compounds that would significantly that would significantly impact soil or wildlife. That's my understanding.
Do you recommend any baseline tests to be done pre-construction to compare then in an ongoing fashion with after-post construction?
I have never seen that completed for a solar development before.
Okay. Have you seen other types of fence used in lieu of chain link?
I have seen renderings of other types of fence, yes.
In what types of fence? If you could describe them?
It was a fencing that was required for a specific solar ordinance, and it was the only that I've seen of its kind. The vast majority of requirements from local zoning regulations require a six- or eight-foot chain link fence with barbed wire 99% of the time.
In the instance that you viewed a different type of a fence, can you describe what that fence, what was different about it? Describe that fence for me, if you would.
It was a full-screen fence for a less-than-five-megawatt project that was adjacent with on a property of the owner of the property that was being leased for the solar project. And the requirement in the lease was to install a full-screen wooden fence.
Okay. Are you familiar with woven wire-style agricultural fence?
I am familiar.
Would that be applicable to surround the perimeter of an SES of this size?
That is not specified in the ordinance.
Would that have better impact from an environmental standpoint or better impact for wildlife? The woven wire-style fence?
I don't see a difference in the utilization of either.
Have you studied that in the layout of an SES at all in your history?
Not officially, no.
Okay. Earlier, it was talked about the ponding effect as it pertains to migratory birds and the panels, the ability of the panel to confuse the migratory bird to potentially land in that area. Are you familiar with that?
I'm familiar.
In your opinion, is there, you know, from a wildlife standpoint or environmental standpoint, are there things that you would recommend to mitigate that potential issue?
So I believe your question is in regard to the previous question regarding the lake effect hypothesis. As it stands, this is considered in the industry, the lake effect hypothesis. It is being studied with regard to utility scale PV solar, where panels at a specific gradient, the hypothesis being that they resemble water. Duke Energy is actively engaged with government agencies and non-government agencies as well, including the Avian Solar Working Group to support that research. There is currently no studies which prove that theory. To my knowledge.
I believe that's all the questions I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Lawson, I think you've already asked questions. So, to the back room. There's some, I guess we said there were three people back there. Any questions from the jury deliberation room? Again, it's a new night, Mr. Shipert, so if you'll state your name and remind us where you live in relation to the project?
My name is Brad Shipert. I live adjacent to the project.
All right, questions of, can you, first of all, can you hear him, Ms. Clinchurn?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Questions?
Okay, so under the cultural resources page that you had in the pamphlet provided here, I just kind of want to expound upon, what defines like an archaeological or architectural resource?
That is, it depends. So, time is one. An archaeological resource is pre-1650 is generally the industry standard, and historical would be considered post-1650, 1700. They'd be considered a historical artifact.
Could you provide some examples of those resources that you've seen in other projects?
Examples for historical resources would be shards of glass or pottery indicating historic use as an agricultural site. Prehistoric, an example is an arrowhead or a spearpoint.
And what was the evidence that was found that required the additional testing?
That is generally a blanket recommendation. I put together these reports as well as review. That is generally a blanket recommendation. I I put together these reports as well as review other consultants' reports. This is very standard to state that, you know, state the facts, what is found on the site. For the state of Illinois, there is a publicly available database called the H A R G I S. Apologies, I don't have the the full acronym out. But that is a publicly available database that was reviewed, that would contain resources that are documented by the state. They are, again, generally agricultural residences and those artifacts or those items that could be associated with agricultural activities, speaking for this specific project area. So those those items were reviewed as part of that report, and the recommendation for further study is is a general recommendation, particularly if those locations, specific locations will be impacted. If they are not anticipated to be impacted, then generally, a study is is not required. However, as part of due diligence, the project intends to complete that phase one ESA study for those cultural, historic cultural finds.
Question, just give me one second here. Believe you answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks in the back room? Okay. All right, Ms. Johansson, remind us of your name and where you live in relation to the project, please.
Martha Johansson, within one and a half miles of the project.
All right, questions of Ms. Kling, Sharon?
Did you state that the fence is going to be six inches above the ground?
No, that was stated as an example of a potential minimization effort in regard to protected species.
Okay. Will milkweed be one of the plants that will be sown for the monarch butterfly?
At this time, the vegetation plan included, which I I described, includes a a general seed mix as an example. However, the the project will utilize a regionally appropriate seed mix. I do not know if that would include a milkweed species at this time.
Do you regard a thirty-five or a seventy-year lease as a temporary lease?
Yes, because the the use itself will be decommissioned entirely. It will be decommissioned to the extent that is required by both the state through the AMA agreement as well as the decommissioning plan submitted with the application.
Have any solar energy systems been decommissioned yet?
Not to my immediate knowledge.
How then can you say that the land will be returned as good or better after decommissioning than before than it is now?
Due to the overall minimal impacts anticipated during construction, minimal anticipated grading as well as rather minimal impacts to the surface. The the posts themselves for the panels as well as project roads are overall for the entire acreage of the project rather, rather minimal. Additionally, it's my understanding that only one third of the project area would be covered in infrastructure. It would not be a one hundred percent cover of the site.
Would the wildlife become more abundant on adjacent landowners since they will be denied access to the site?
Not to my knowledge. I would assume a a general shift as is generally seen through any development of a of a road or of a of a housing subdivision.
Do you know how much topsoil might be removed?
That has not been determined at this time, no.
Being told that a cover crop will be planted first before installation begins, how much damage to this cover crop would be done during construction?
I cannot accurately answer that question at this time.
Is this cover crop part of the permanent grass that will be on the site then?
That is the intent, that that cover crop be the initial cover to then be integrated with an additional regionally applicable seed mix, yes.
If birds would light on a panel, would that, would there be any heat produced that could bother them, burn their feet?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Will any water wells be drilled on the site?
That has yet to be determined for the project.
Is water going to be used to wash the panels?
It is typically part of a of a project's regularly scheduled maintenance, that that is a is a possibility for for cleaning the panels of any subtle dust. But at this time, that has not been, has not been decided.
Generally, how often would the panels be washed?
I do not know. But there is a regular scheduled maintenance in that will be in place to determine that.
Do you know where this water would come from?
I do not.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions? The magic door that opens with nobody. Shipert, would you remind us of your first name and your location, your residence, location of the project, proposed project?
Yeah, Angela Shipert. I'm adjacent to the project within one and a half miles.
Okay, questions of Ms. Kling, Sharon?
Yes. All right. What is the year of the earliest project that you've worked on in regards to solar farms?
Personally, two thousand fourteen.
Two thousand. Okay, thank you. And have you personally conducted or reviewed any long-term studies on the impacts of solar to wildlife?
I'm not aware of any studies that have been conducted to study such a question.
So to your knowledge, there are zero studies to the long-term impacts of wildlife from solar projects?
To my knowledge, there are no studies that generally review wildlife impacts.
Thank you. My next question is, have you done any studies on the frequency of tornadoes, high winds, derechoes, or hail in Lee County?
I have not.
Do you understand that Lee County is an area that has tornadoes, hail, high winds, and sometimes derechoes?
I'm aware.
In your professional opinion, is it possible that a tornado, high wind, or hail could damage solar panels?
I do not have the background to answer that question. That would be a question for an upcoming witness.
Okay. Are you familiar with the classification H three seventy-two, a long-term chronic aquatic hazard?
Not specifically, no.
Are you aware that cadmium sulfide in these panels has the classification H three seventy-two, long-term chronic aquatic hazard?
Object to the form of the question. She hasn't established that there's any such chemical inside the panels.
Sustained. You you can ask the question a little different way, Ms. Shipert. Ask her if she knows if the panels contain that substance.
Do you know that the panels contain cadmium sulfide?
For the proposed panel to be utilized for the project, I am not aware. That would be a question for an upcoming witness.
Okay. Do you know that the proposed panels contain cadmium telluride?
Same objection.
It is.
Okay, got it.
Ink. But we'll presume. Do you know if the panels contain that substance, Ms. Kling, Sharon?
Do you know if the panels contain cadmium telluride?
If they contain cadmium telluride, for the purposes of this project, a panel has not been chosen. Therefore, this is a question for an upcoming witness.
Is a bi-facial solar panel the panel that will be used within this project?
As stated previously by Mr. Tyler Kuhn of Duke Energy, yes, that is the intent.
Okay. Next question. You mentioned a federally protective prairie plant. What technique would you use to plant the proposed pollinator mix without disturbing this plant?
Based off of our consultation with the US Fish and Wildlife to date, this is one of the four species that appears on a list to be considered to have potential effects on this particular species. For the purposes of the Preliminary Waters and Habitat Assessment Report that was completed, it was determined based on a desktop and site assessment that the habitat, the prairie habitat in particular, that this rather endemic species requires is not located on the property, and therefore the impacts to this species are considered to be of a no effect determination.
Okay. What impact does stripping topsoil have on soil structure?
I do not know to my knowledge.
No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you the last one out there, Ms. Shipert?
Yes, I am the last.
Thank you. All right. Think that's it, if I must say. Okay, very good. It is break time. We will recess until. Oh, sure, I'll talk. Yeah, yeah. Ms. Kling, Sharon, thank you very much. I'm used to saying you may step down, but that doesn't really accurately describe. I guess you can sign off.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Just leaving, before we take a break, can I ask to enter Ms. Kling, Sharon's PowerPoint into evidence?
Sure, done. Okay, thank you. When is your turn? Um. Okay, break time until twenty-five o'clock. Eight. Ten minutes, in other words. On that clock, I don't know what, oh, that clock's, Ms. Duffy must have, or Zach cured it.
Duffy did.
She did.
Oh, I've done one. Oh, I've done one.
We're out of the ten-minute recess. Everybody's back in their places, and you may continue, Mr. Berry.
Thank you. The next witness I'd like to call is Mr. Mike Maroos. Are you there, Mr. Maroos?
Turn your audio on.
Yep. You're muted, Mike.
Okay.
There we go, there we go. Mr. Maroos, you want to raise your right hand for me, please? And do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, oh, truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, you may inquire, counselor.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Maroos. Could you please state your name for the record and spell it?
Michael S. Maroos, M-A-R-O-U-S.
And could you tell us a little bit about your background, Mr. Maroos?
Sure. I have presented at Maroos and Company, which is a full-service real estate appraisal and consulting firm located in Park Ridge, Illinois. I have graduated from the University of Illinois-Champaign with the degree of finance specialization, urban land economics. I've held the MAI designation for over thirty-five years and probably appraised over fifteen thousand properties with a concentration with the state of Illinois. We specialize in complex valuation issues and have appraised thousands and thousands of acres and major properties in the state and Illinois. As part of this, we have probably done a couple hundred impact studies for all types of properties, including major industrial properties, landfills, waste transfer stations, commercial development, and also quite a bit having to do with energy and have done many, many studies of major solar farms throughout the Midwest looking at the value impacts of these proposed developments, similar to the study that I presented for the South Dixon Solar Project. I've had the MAI since nineteen eighty, president of the Chicago Chapter, also invited to membership to the Councils of Real Estate, sat on that national board for nine years and hold the general certified license for the state of Illinois since it became available, which is the highest form of real estate appraisal, and hold that license in five or six other states.
Mr. Maroos, you said you examined property value impacts for other solar energy projects. Were any of those in Illinois?
Yes, quite a few.
Okay, Mr. Maroos, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Yes, I do.
Okay, could I ask us to turn to page two of the presentation?
Yes, so, so page two.
Mr. Maroos, if you could bear with us, we're going to put it on the screen here.
Okay, I can't see the screen.
Understood.
It has D.
D?
All right.
He's going to check to make sure it's showing on the remote screen.
I can, I can see it on my screen.
Well, just ask, just answer questions, thank you. Yep, we're all set, you may continue.
Okay, thank you. Could you turn to page two of the presentation, please? Okay, Mr. Maroos, page two appears to show information about the background, background of your company and some of the projects you've worked on. Is there... Before we move on, I just wanted to check to see if there's anything more you wanted to say about the information.
No, I, I believe that summarizes the general information on the company on the left, major solar projects on the top right, and then major wind projects by state in the bottom right.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Maroos, did you perform a property values market impact study in connection with the South Dixon Solar Project?
Yes.
Is that study Appendix C in the permit application?
Yes, it is.
And what were the conclusions you drew from the study?
There's no market data indicating that the solar project will have a negative impact on property values in the area. No measurable difference between homes located near an operating solar farm and those located some distance from an operating solar farm.
I'm going to ask you to... You were trailing off there a little bit at the end. Did you get that to a reporter? Okay, thanks, just, just want to remind you, Mr. Maroos, to try not to tail off at the end of your sentences.
And it may be, Mr. Maroos, you're getting your mouth farther away from your computer's speak, speakers, microphone.
Understood.
Yep, thank you. Can we pay, turn to page three? Oh, we're actually there, thank you. So, page three on the presentation. Mr. Maroos, what factors tend to affect property values that you, did you look at in your study?
Numerous factors, including appearance, actually, the, the visit, physical or aesthetics of a project, the environment and sustainability, probably good examples of pollution, spewing, smokestacks, some other pollution such as from a landfill, noise and odor, noise from heavy truck traffic, odor for, let's say, as an example, hog containment facility, traffic, high volumes of traffics such as on a major state highway or interstate, hazardous materials such as chemicals, gasoline, or other dangerous items used in a generally manufacturing process. Then the consideration of both the positive and negative to public services, including infrastructure, the burden on the roads, but the participation to upgrade of the road systems or the lack of burden on the roads, the benefit of additional income or taxes to a school district compared with a new subdivision that creates significant cost in educational cost. Public safety, obviously, certain aggressive or more dense uses can create some concerns for public safety or passive uses such as solar do not create a demand for public safety.
Okay, thank you. The next three slides, I believe, are specific to your study. Page four includes an executive summary, which I believe discusses the conclusion. You've already stated the conclusion, but is there anything you'd like to say more about that? Would you like to elaborate that on that?
Yes. First of all, controls are in place to ensure ongoing compliance. There are very significant final, financial benefits to the local economy, including significant long-term land payments that are not impacted by commodity pricing or weather, and also the significant increase in the amount of various taxes paid, both real estate and other. There will be some jobs created, which is a benefit. And then what I'll be going into later in discussion with the consideration of residential transactions, land transactions, and how these impact a county or a township or the project area. And then I will discuss briefly certain peer-reviewed study that was done in regard to impact of solar on real estate and also where I actually interviewed assessors in Illinois counties where there were major solar facilities to question in regard to real estate tax appeals and reduction in value and if assessors actually diminished values proximate to solar facilities. And the simple answer in Illinois and five other states I've done that in, there have been no instances where assessors are valuing or assessing property lower proximate to solar farms and nor have there been any successful deals.
All right, thank you, let's move to the next slide. I think you've already covered part of this, but is there anything else you'd like to say about the scope of the work you performed in connection with the study?
Yes, but briefly, I reviewed the proposed project. I inspected the area, the footprint, the comparables that are provided in the report. I drove the road system, but I looked at the demographic and the income and population levels of Lee County. And I looked at transactional data in regard to sale prices of single-family and ag land in the area.
Okay, and then the next slide shows a map of the project. If we could go one more slide, please. Mr. Maroos, did you look at actual sales data when you were preparing your report and doing your study? And did you, did that, did you compare sales of residences, for example?
Yes, both in the project area and there are no, are no as-built solar projects. So, it was not possible to provide sales of proximate to solar projects. But what I did do is look into other areas where solar project had been developed to research sales of property that were proximate to solar panels and similar properties in the same area that were not proximate to analyze and determine if there was any differential based on the proximity to solar panels.
And, and we're on a slide that's entitled matched pair analysis. Can you explain to us what a matched pair analysis is?
Yes, it's basically attempting to take two similar properties and adjusting for their differences to look and see if a proposed use or an existing use has any impact on value. Whether you're looking at a comparable ranch property next to a proposed factory and a comparable ranch-type property a mile away that has similar characteristics, you're attempting to determine if there was any discernible difference based on that use. In this situation, the matched pairs were done for properties proximate to solar arrays and those similar properties in the same area that were not proximate to solar arrays.
Okay, and I believe your presentation has some examples, correct?
Yes.
All right, let's go to the next slide. And, and you want to discuss matched pair number one?
Sure. Matched pair number one in the following page will show an aerial overview. But it's basically two single-family residences that were built in the mid-nineties. The first is about four hundred and eighty-five feet from a solar array. One B is not proximate, they're both in Streeter. the burden on the roads, but the participation to upgrade of the road systems or the lack of burden on the roads. The benefit of additional income or taxes to a school district compared with a new subdivision that creates significant cost in educational cost. Public safety, obviously, certain aggressive or more dense uses can create some concerns for public safety or passive uses such as solar do not create a demand for public safety.
Okay, thank you. The next three slides, I believe, are specific to your study. Page four includes an executive summary, which I believe discusses the conclusion. You've already stated the conclusion, but is there anything you'd like to say more about that? Would you like to elaborate that on that?
Yes. First of all, controls are in place to ensure ongoing compliance. There are very significant financial benefits to the local economy, including significant long-term land payments that are not impacted by commodity pricing or weather, and also the significant increase in the amount of various taxes paid, both real estate and other. There will be some jobs created, which is a benefit. And then what I'll be going into later in discussion with the consideration of residential transactions, land transactions, and how these impact a county or a township or the project area. And then I will discuss briefly certain peer-reviewed study that was done in regard to impact of solar on real estate and also where I actually interviewed assessors in Illinois counties where there were major solar facilities to question in regard to real estate tax appeals and reduction in value and if assessors actually diminished values proximate to solar facilities. And the simple answer in Illinois and five other states I've done that in, there have been no instances where assessors are valuing or assessing property lower proximate to solar farms and nor have there been any successful deals.
All right, thank you. Let's move to the next slide. I think you've already covered part of this, but is there anything else you'd like to say about the scope of the work you performed in connection with the study?
Yes, but briefly, I reviewed the proposed project. I inspected the area, the footprint, the comparables that are provided in the report. I drove the road system, but I looked at the demographic and the income and population levels of Lee County, and I looked at transactional data in regard to sale prices of single-family and ag land in the area.
Okay, and then the next slide shows a map of the project. If we could go one more slide, please. Mr. Marus, did you look at actual sales data when you were preparing your report and doing your study? And did you, did that, did you compare sales of residences, for example?
Yes, both in the project area and there are no as-built solar projects, so it was not possible to provide sales proximate to solar projects. But what I did do is look into other areas where solar projects had been developed to research sales of property that were proximate to solar panels and similar properties in the same area that were not proximate to analyze and determine if there was any differential based on the proximity to solar panels.
And we're on a slide that's entitled matched pair analysis. Can you explain to us what a matched pair analysis is?
Yes, it's basically attempting to take two similar properties and adjusting for their differences to look and see if a proposed use or an existing use has any impact on value. Whether you're looking at a comparable ranch property next to a proposed factory and a comparable ranch-type property a mile away that has similar characteristics, you're attempting to determine if there was any discernible difference based on that use. In this situation, the matched pairs were done for properties proximate to solar arrays and those similar properties in the same area that were not proximate to solar arrays.
Okay, and I believe your presentation has some examples, correct?
Yes.
All right, let's go to the next slide, and you want to discuss matched pair number one?
Sure. Matched pair number one in the following page will show an aerial overview, but it's basically two single-family residences that were built in the mid 90s. The first is about 485 feet from a solar array. One B is not proximate. They're both in Streeter. The first one sold for $186,000. The one proximate, the one that was in proximate, sold for $151,000. Adjustments were made for the larger building and lot size of the property proximate to the solar. They both, the first one proximate had three bedrooms, four baths. The one not, three bedrooms, two and a half baths. So analysis was made and adjustments were made. I inspected the properties and there was no discernible difference based on the proximity of 1A to solar panel.
Okay, thank you. Can we move to the match, first matched pair in Indiana, I believe. It's Madison County, Indiana.
Yes, so these are both in Frankton, Indiana. They're relatively small ranch-style houses. 1A sold for $112,725, again, 425 feet from a solar array. Picture on the top of the page, you know, shows the distance, shows the house, shows the solar array. The one not proximate was a few blocks away, sold for $74,500. That is older building, so there's adjustments made there. The building sizes are very similar. The one proximate to the solar array had a larger lot size, but they were both one-story, three-bedroom. First one next to the solar had two baths. The one not had one and a half. Again, adjustments were made and analyzed, and there was no evidence that there was a negative impact based on the proximity of the solar arrays.
Okay, I think you have a third example from North Branch, Minnesota?
Yes, I do. And this is, I'm sorry. This is interesting because it's proximate to the North Star Solar Farm, which is north, kind of a northern suburb of the Twin Cities, St. Paul, Minneapolis. And this is a large, well, the largest installed solar farms, over 1,000 acres in the Midwest. This one is actually showing a sale resale of the same property. It's 165 feet from the solar farm. It had sold on the right in May of 2010 for $219,900. And then the solar farm was finished in the mid, I think, 2016-ish, and the property resold for $302,500. And quite frankly, the market was somewhat flat economically, but probably about 2013, but this reflected a significant increase in property value. This is another assessor I spoke with who actually did a study, was cited in a newspaper article discussing the fact of major solar in his county and the fact that there was absolutely no negative value.
Your voice trailed off again, Mr. Marus.
Oh, and hit the assessor's conclusion that there was absolutely no negative impact on value.
Got to keep your mouth close to the mic. I know it's hard to do, but...
Okay, and now you've provided these three examples in your presentation, but did your report include additional examples, Mr. Marus?
Yes, it did. Many more examples.
Thank you. Now, you mentioned the assessors again, and you've, you said you, I think earlier, you said you talked to county assessors in Illinois and other states. How many assessors did you speak to in Illinois about impacts of solar properties, solar projects?
Six Illinois counties. There are a couple of small solar installations in Cook County, but that has a population of about 4 million people, so that really wasn't relevant. But the six, what I would say, somewhat rural counties in Illinois that had solar installation.
And what questions did you pose to these assessors?
Well, I explained who I was, what I was doing, where I was performing the work. Then I discussed, because I was aware, you know, through public research, the information concerning the solar farms are available. And then I discussed their familiarity with them, their experience with them, and then asked them, number one, were they familiar? They all were. Number two, were they assessing properties proximate to solar facilities at a different value than similar properties in the same township and county? And their answer was no. The third question was, were there any tax appeals filed with an allegation that the property values were diminished because of solar? And that answer was no, which was then the easy answer. Were there any appeals provided because of the existence of solar? And that answer was no. Now, as part of the conversation, they, we talked about the pre-development and some of the concerns that they had, and they said there was concern, and they had had some calls in regard to the solar development. But once it was development installed, they had had any. It became essentially part of the fabric of the community.
And so just to make sure I understand, if the solar projects had visited and negative impact on property values, would you have expected to see lower assessed values of those properties?
Definitely. So I've, I've been involved as a consultant, as an appraiser, and probably over 1,000 tax appeal cases in my career and probably half representing public bodies defending that. And clearly, when people think they're over-assessed, they will go ahead and appeal their taxes. It's a significant economic impact to them.
But the assessors you spoke to, again, just to be clear, they were aware of no reductions in assessed evaluations based on proximity to solar projects, correct?
Correct.
And they were aware of no tax appeals that had been made for people who live near solar projects, correct?
Correct.
Okay, let's move to the next slide, please. One more. Okay, this slide, Mr. Marus, shows a summary of residential sales nearest to South Dixon Solar. Can you walk us through the next couple of slides and explain why you included these slides?
Well, as an appraiser, it's always important to understand the community, the price points, the type of properties, the typical building size, the typical lot size, and activity in the area. And try and find recent sales in and around the footprint. And that's what was done here with these comparable, I believe there are six of them, basically reflecting values, sale prices from $110 to $266,000. They took place from basically late 2018 through third quarter of 2020. Generally, they were one and a half to maybe three-acre sites, built earliest 1901 to 2000. And the building sizes here probably averaged about 1,800 feet. And then the price per foot on the right side generally indicates typical average in the $90 per square foot of building area range. And then the next slide, I think there's information in regard to agricultural sales. I believe that's my page 21. And this again is looking at prices of agricultural properties in and around the solar farm. Obviously, some of the smaller acreage will reflect some higher unit values. Some of the properties that have higher-quality soil will reflect higher unit values, and those that have significant building improvements. But these are, you know, fairly typical acreage value in comparable counties, whether it be Livingston, or Henry, or McLean, or LaSalle, that we've been seeing over the last several years.
All right, thank you. I believe earlier you mentioned something that your your report and your review included a literature review, so can we move to that slide, please?
Sure. This is interesting. There's been quite a few peer-reviewed articles on wind, but there were virtually none on solar. A lot of what was written was basically blogs and a lot of it unsupported opinion. The University of Texas at Austin commissioned a study in 2018 where they basically looked at solar development throughout the United States. And again, they queried assessors and to see what had happened in their various counties. And what they found were assessors that had no experience with solar were generally negative. They, you know, just didn't have the experience. They were uncertain. They had concern. But then, when they did the research with assessors that actually had had solar farms developed, found that there was no negative impact on value. Part of this is influenced by proximity to population centers and, you know, generally, a more suburban population may have a density of 800 to 1,000 residents per square mile. The subject area appears to be in the 30 to 40 residents per square mile, which is obviously a low-density agricultural-type location.
All right, thank you. Mr. Marus, we've covered a lot of ground in a short period of time. Your report looks at a number of different data points in a comprehensive way, including actual sales data, discussions you had with tax assessors, and peer-reviewed literature. Just to summarize then, Mr. Marus, does your study show that the South Dixon Solar Project will have no negative effect on the property values of homes located in or near the project's footprint?
Yes, my study determined that the South Dixon Solar Project will have no negative impact on property values in the area surrounding the project.
Okay, thank you. Judge, that's all the questions I have for Mr. Marus.
Okay. Mr. Boonstra, if you can hear me? Thank you. How about you, Ms. Duffy? ZBA, Mr. Forster? What you, Mr. Burrow?
Yes, the question's a couple of them on your data. First off, I guess, would be the question about what's the largest solar area that you were dealing with in your appraisals?
In my appraisals, it was the North Star in Minnesota, which is about 1,000 acres, a little, somewhere in the area of 100 megawatts. I have had experience with solar in Indiana exceeding 600 megawatts on probably over 4,500 acres. And I've looked at the majority of solar projects I've looked at, probably average in the 150 to 300-megawatt range, which, you know, generally translates from, you know, 1,200 to 4,000 acres.
Did you notice any difference in the size of the solar project? Is there any difference in the values that the appraisals came in?
That's a very interesting question, and the answer is, it appeared because of the rural nature of the projects and the size of the projects, the larger ones had an economic impact to the community as far as land rents. You know, it's basically four to five times what a land rent will be for agricultural use, and plus it's a stability rent. It makes an easier loan. And so it provides that type of economic viability, and it's a multi-fold increase in the amount of taxes. So it adds money into the infrastructure of a community and provides that economic benefit. So the answer, from what I can see, is yes. And again, it becomes another part of the agricultural community and provides more stability and more synergy.
Okay. The first property you had, the first property you had, I think it was a Streeter, Illinois one. And what was the size of that project? Was, was that like 160 acres or something? I don't know. The, I don't think the...
Just let him answer the question. Let him answer the question.
Okay.
Mr. Marus, did you hear the question?
I did. I needed to look at my report.
Why'd you heard it?
And it appears that it's probably in the 150-plus or minus acre range, probably could be 130 to 200 acres.
Okay. That's all I've got then. Thank you.
Both of you. To you.
Yes, I've got a few questions. You indicated that you've, you're, you're familiar with projects that are 300, 400, even as large as 600 megavolts. Why is the largest one in this comparison only that 100-megavolt, 1,000-acre project?
Because the large-scale solar has, a lot of it have been approved in the last several years that are under the development stage and construction, but they haven't been open and operated. There's, you know, 300-megawatt one in western Wisconsin that's under construction now. There's a couple to be developed that haven't in Christian County. There is about 100-megawatt project north of Indianapolis, but that just opened up earlier this year. So these larger-scale projects haven't been open or, you know, finished construction and open long enough, even though they've been approved, to be able to, you know, properly study sales transactions and see the real impact on the market.
Okay. Going back to the Streeter one, I noticed that the one proximate, the sale was in October of 2016. The one not proximate was October of 2010. Would that generally be an acceptable timeframe for comparing properties?
That's a good question. It depends on the market. From probably 2010, which is late 2010, to probably 2014, the market in Streeter was relatively flat. So there would be, you know, a reasonable, probably a 3% to 4% adjustment, starting in '14 to 2016, which was done. You know, there was a period, probably from '08 to '10, there was a negative drop. Then at the end of '10, beginning of '11, the market started to come back. But really, in a market like Streeter, didn't really start to get that much stronger until '14-ish or so. And, you know, it's still, it's a pretty stable market. There have, haven't been huge spikes annually in value, and part of it's impacted by crop prices.
Okay, another question. You indicated that you had checked with assessors in six counties in Illinois. Why is the LaSalle County the only matched pair example provided, or are there others? At least for the purpose of the presentation.
In the other, in the other counties in Illinois, where there were solar projects, I didn't find acceptable match pairs.
What do you mean by acceptable?
Where there had actually been transactions of similar properties. You know, some of these are in such rural areas, there are very few transactions, and many times, they may be to family members, which doesn't qualify under the definition of market value as an arms-length transaction. So there was just little data, and a lot of them are in stable areas where there just aren't any sales. So that was the problem.
Okay, I understand. One other question, and it may just be a technical glitch, but in the most recent single-family residential sale summary that you provided, you've got 847 Lavine Road, but you have Edinburgh, Illinois. Did you pull this information up off of the internet? I mean, internet or research stuff, or did you actually make local contact for your local MLS contact for your information?
I'm looking at my report, and I show Lavine Road and Dixon, Illinois, in my report. So what document did I have the other address? Was it in this?
Yeah, it's in your, in your presentation.
That's, I apologize, that's a typo. That's in Dixon, Illinois.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Mr. Meyer?
How long has the North Star Solar Firm been in operation?
Sometime between 2015 and 2017. So it's plus or minus five years or so.
Thank you. That's all. All right. As far as interested parties go, I'm going to do a little differently. In the back room first. If somebody's back there can hear me, and you want to ask questions. Oh, there's the magic door. All right, Ms. Shipper, just for the record, your name, please?
Angela Shipper.
Go ahead, Angela. Questions of Mr. Marus?
Yes. Thank you. In your presentation, you talked about job impact to the area. Did you take into consideration in that analysis, impact to loss of jobs in agribusiness?
The answer is yes. And the solar farm itself will not have a large number of workers, but in the agribusiness world, you know, we're seeing more and more of, with the major equipment, that, you know, some of these farmers are farming 3,000 to 7,000 acres. So a lot of the agribusiness jobs have been reduced because of the efficiencies of equipment. So that's really the answer there.
Are you aware of other solar projects in the Lee County area?
Well, my understanding, there are none, but there have been a couple approved relatively recently, yes.
And are you aware of the total acreage of these projects combined?
The exact number, no, but I believe it's well over 2,000 acres.
Well, could you say that last part again?
I'm not aware of the exact acreage, but my understanding is that when developed, it could be over 2,000 acres.
Are you aware that this project is over 3,000 acres?
I am.
And so you're saying cumulatively, you think the total amount is over 2,000 acres?
No. I was referring to the two other projects that you described. Did you mean the subject which is not approved, but is, so are you, are you adding it into the other two? I don't understand your question.
Just, just so you don't understand, don't ask her a question, just, you don't understand. Want to re-ask your question, Ms. Shipper?
Sure. With Duke Energy's project, in combination with other solar projects in this county, are you aware of the acreage total of those projects?
The exact number, no, but my understanding, it should be over 5,000 acres.
Okay, thank you. Have you done any market research on homes surrounded on four sides by solar?
Please define four sides and the distance that the houses are from solar.
Do you understand the question or not understand the question?
Not this, no, it's not specific enough, Your Honor.
Have you done market research on any homes that are adjacent within a solar project on four sides of the residence?
Again, I don't understand the question without more specifics.
Are you aware that this project's project has residences surrounded on four sides by this project?
In a couple instances, I am aware, and some with significant setbacks and distance.
Do you foresee any property value reduction to those homes?
No.
Would you personally buy a home enclosed by four sides of a solar project?
Again, without more specifics, I don't understand the question.
Okay. Did you say that, in your opinion, there would be zero impact to property value of any of the homes within this project?
I did.
Okay. And have you done any match pair studies on any residences that have solar panels on two sides of the residence?
The answer is yes.
And in those instances, did you find a reduction in market value of those properties? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the answer.
No.
Okay. Have you done a match pair study on any properties that have panels on three sides of a residence?
Yes.
And did you find any property value reduction to those residences?
No.
Okay. You mentioned that there's no peer review. Did you mention that there are no peer review articles on solar property values available?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay. Are you aware that this project annually would only generate approximately $1.3 million in revenue to this community?
All revenue? No, that's incorrect.
Are you aware that there would be one, roughly $1.3 million in tax revenue generated to this community?
I would have to refresh my recollection, but that's possible, yes.
Okay. Are you aware that our neighboring community has a nuclear plant that generates $38 million annually in tax revenue to their residents, to their community, excuse me?
I am aware of the neighboring nuke plant that generates significant tax revenue. I don't know the exact amount.
Could you say that that tax revenue is greater than that of this, the tax revenue for this project, which is solar?
As long as it stays open, yes. It's a much larger and more expensive facility. So it's really not a comparison. It's like comparing a storefront to a Lowe's home improvement store. So the answer is yes, but it's really not a fair comparison.
Okay. You said you consulted with other assessors. Were there any questions that you raised to those assessors about properties of panels on three or four sides of the residences?
The answer is, I asked about all panels proximate of any amount of any distance, and the answer was no impact.
Okay.
I don't recall if I asked your specific question, but my question covered your question.
Okay. Are you aware that? Actually, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else in that room with questions?
All right, Ms. Shipper, you may ask questions of Mr. Marus.
Okay. Have you or have you seen any real appraisals of real property on adjacent or surrounding properties to a solar facility before and after solar development?
With a hypothetical assumption, yes, I have. But that was the appraiser's hypothetical condition, and the panels had not been built. And in that situation, there actually was a transaction that took place.
So the answer would be no? Correct?
Well, the appraiser, that was his opinion, so I saw that appraisal, but physically, the panels had not yet been built, but they had been approved. And they were basically under development, but it weren't stabilized.
When multiple residences come onto the market, for example, the multiple homes that are surrounded by solar panels, how would that affect market value when the supply of housing is ample?
It's like another, any other market phenomenon. The best properties, the most modern, the most efficient, the best value, the largest home, will generally have the highest price and the quickest marketing time. If there's an oversupply of product, that will tend to depress values. It's simple economics.
In generally speaking, does the view from, that the view outside of the residence from inside the residence become a selling point for a property?
It depends on the entitlement and the control, and what the property owner owns. If they're sitting next to an open field, they're always, that's under agricultural use, they're always under the vulnerability of zoning provides, that there could be a major agricultural development, a major barn, silos built, potentially hog containment farm. So you really don't control the property that you don't own. If you're sitting on a lake, or a forest preserve that has entitlements for perpetual open space, absolutely. But if you're next to an area that you don't have that control, and the land use basically has not made it open lands, no you don't.
In the match pairs that were provided here, what was their proximity to town, or to the nearest municipal area, I guess you could say?
It depends on the situation. Most of them were, well, the Frankton one in Indiana was basically in the town, just outside, but it's a small rural town. The Streeter, I believe, and again, off the top of my head, was several miles. The North Star basically was in an outlying area where there really wasn't a town. There was kind of a strip of service, commercial, retail, within probably three-quarters of a mile to a mile and a half.
The North Star example, that provides the sale before and after solar farm development, is this the only example nationwide that you can find of a sale before and after solar panel development?
In the Midwest, at this time, I didn't, I believe I have some sales out in the West, but I stayed with the Midwest in this situation.
Is it standard practice to only have one comparable sale to make your assessment on valuation?
Object to the form of the question. That's not, his report includes a number of different data points.
You can ask the question. Do you understand the question, Mr. Marus?
I believe I do, but it's not accurate for my report. But yes, an appraiser generally will require more than one data point.
It's all the questions I have. Thank you. And there was one more person out there. Does she have any questions? All right, Ms. Johansson?
Martha Johansson, one and a half miles from the site.
Okay, thanks. Questions of Mr. Marus?
What setbacks were in effect in those houses that were surrounded on four sides? That you mentioned that you had evaluated some houses on, that were surrounded by panels on four sides, but the comparison was also considering the setbacks? What were the setbacks? How large?
First of all, I didn't answer yes to the four-sided question, so I can't give you that answer.
What is the largest solar system that you have evaluated these houses on?
Probably a 600-acre solar, proposed solar facility in central Indiana, but it is not built, so I didn't use any comps. The largest solar facility in my report, I believe, is the North Star in Minnesota.
And how large is that?
Approximately 1,000 acres, plus or- Approximately 1,000 acres, plus or minus a little over 100 megawatts.
So you have no comparisons then with larger solar farms than 100 megawatts?
They're really, while they've been approved, they haven't been developed, as I explained earlier, so that data was not available.
Then there is no information available on property values for large solar systems?
Is that, he may not be sure if that's a question.
Okay. Is there any information available on houses adjacent to 4,000, 5,000 acre solar systems?
There's some development out west, but in Nevada and Southern California, but I didn't think that was appropriate for the study. In my opinion, the 100 megawatt is a very good example, and has the same characteristics of the same height, generally the same design, and that was the best data available in the Midwest.
Most of these paired results that you have presented, what is the size, what is the acreage size of the solar system?
They vary generally from probably 12 to maybe 75 acres, I believe. Some of the ones in the Carolinas are that size, and then again, the largest is North Star, which is, you know, the thousand-plus acre size.
No further questions.
Thank you.
Well, you want to put up the Zoomers. Folks on Zoom, I'm just trying to decide whether we'll pick this up again tomorrow night or keep going, and I want to get a feel for how many people have questions. So if you think you're gonna have a question, would you raise your hand? I mean, okay. Well, keeping in mind, we like to keep this at two and a half hours, but if there's only four, and I don't want anybody to feel I'm truncating your opportunity to ask questions, but let's just keep it to questions relevant to Mr. Marus's testimony. Mr., or Jamie?
Okay, I'm here.
Very good. And your last name again?
Amy Lawson, right in the middle of the project.
Great, good.
You had stated, Mr. Marus, at the beginning of your testimony, that you've done many, many projects in Illinois. I believe this is how you worded it. Is that correct?
Solar projects, yes.
Okay, and in your slide, so it only shows three?
Yes, but I've consulted and working on others as we speak, including this project.
Okay, so how, what would many, many be for you, your definition of many, many? If it's not three, what would you consider, or I guess a closer number?
Well, probably six, and then total 15, 20, including the other states.
I'm just asking for Illinois. Just in Illinois, how many have you consulted that are 3,000 acres or 500 megawatts? Would the answer be zero? Considering there's no other 500 megawatt in Illinois?
He can only ask one question at once, and I'm not sure he even heard the first question, and that's not your fault. We only ask one question at a time, otherwise a witness doesn't know what to answer.
All right, sorry.
I don't see him on the screen, we might have lost him.
Mr. Marus, are you there?
Yeah, you can't see me?
There you are, okay. Did you hear the question?
I heard three questions, so I'm not sure.
Mr. Lawson, you want to ask a question again?
My question would be, I'll try to combine them all in one. With the many, many that you've done in Illinois, how many have been 500 megawatts?
None.
Thank you. I guess I'll go, my next question would be, would you buy a house smack dab in the middle of 300 acre solar farm with the entire house having solar panels within 100 foot from the property line?
So four-sided, surrounded, all within 100 feet of my property line, and I'm in a typical residential house. I would say the setbacks are too close, but first of all, I would, you know, the issue with the location of the house, the school systems, the size of the house, the amenities, the function, and more importantly, did my wife like it, would really trump all answers. So there's so many factors when making a personal decision, I really can't answer that question.
Okay, you have, you referred several times to North Star project, and would you say that would be the most comparable project of this project that you, I guess, researched at the time?
In the Midwest, yes.
Okay, are you aware, I believe if I'm correct, your slideshows show that it sold in 322 for 302,500? The house at 190, 367th Street, North Branch, Minnesota, 55056? Would that be correct?
What was the numbers again? I'm looking at my page 14.
The, for what it sold for?
Your question.
Yeah. Did you say the house sold for 3,000, 302,500?
In March of 18, yes.
Okay, are you aware that project sold in 2016 on August 8, 2016 for $360,000? So it took a 16.2% loss when it sold in 18?
That was bought by the developer while the project was being built, who paid a premium and then sold it back to the market. I think the developer bought like eight houses. Yes, I'm aware of that.
So it did take a loss when it sold in 2018?
It was part of the development cost. It was the developer that made that prior purchase, the middle purchase.
Okay, so it sold for less than it was purchased, a prior purchase? The property sold for less in 2018 than it did in 2016?
That's correct. That's correct.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Luz?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Mike is all I see you on the iPad, so I apologize if I forgot your last name, but if you, if you had a, you were evaluating or assessing a property with a bright, obtrusive purple fence around its perimeter, would that have an impact on its assessed value in a positive or negative way?
The answer would be as to the location and the character of the homes, and if it was tastefully done and the market perception. So I would have to study it more. There's a certain segment of the market that likes the color purple more than I do. So I'm not valuing it as to what Mike Marus would pay, it's what the market would pay. So I would have to analyze it. If you're asking, could color be a negative, that goes to aesthetics, and yes, it can.
So aesthetics can affect the appraised or the assessed value of the home that you're looking at, some, in an obtrusive object can impact the assessed value, is that correct?
It depends on the situation and the control and the knowledge. And again, it's, I guess, like a hog farm that gets built next to a residential farm, that is probably not a positive. A 50-foot silo in proximity that's not maintained could be a project or could be a negative. Every case needs to be evaluated.
So a six-foot chain link fence with two strands of barbed wire, three strands of barbed wire across the top of it, would that be recognized as an agricultural fence that meets aesthetic of agricultural? Yes or no? I mean?
I'm contemplating the various fences I've seen on millions of acres, and in certain situations, I have seen that, but it also goes to the prairie grass and the setbacks. It all ties into the whole aesthetic and the passive use of the development compared to a very active use.
So you have appraised property with six-foot chain link fence and three strands of barbed wire in an agricultural setting?
I have.
And if this type of a fence is surrounding a property that you were looking to assess on three and four sides in close proximity to the property line, you believe there's no impact to the value of that home?
I believe the project is planned with the prairie grasses and the height of the panels.
I'm talking about the fence. Answer if you could.
I can't answer the question with just the one component.
I, that's unfortunate.
We don't need editorial comments, just ask a question.
So you don't believe that a six-foot chain link fence with three strands of barbed wire impacts a property value? If you're assessing a farm in a rural district, you do not believe that has an impact, or it would?
Objection, Judge, I think he's asked this already, asked and answered. I mean, he's not, he's not gonna give a different answer.
One more time.
And the answer is, it depends on the whole character of the development and the setbacks and the nature of the immediate area.
Are you familiar with Eldina Solar LLC?
I'm generally familiar with it, but not specifically.
Are you familiar of its proximity to South Dixon Solar LLC?
The exact location, I'm not aware. I know it's in the same general area, but I don't, I haven't seen the footprint.
I've got no further questions, this is pointless.
Jennifer Lawson, I think I see. Jennifer, can you hear me?
Oh, okay. Can you hear me?
Now I can. Remind us where you live in, in proximity, or own a business in proximity to this project?
I reside within the boundaries of the project.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, ask a question.
Mr. Maros, and to your knowledge, has a solar or wind farm been converted back to farmland?
I'm not aware of any solar farms. I am aware that there have, some of the original wind farms have been decommissioned and gone back to agricultural use or recommissioned.
Where's the value of that farmland been assessed at after they have been decommissioned?
I haven't appraised the property, so I can't answer that question.
Okay. In regards to aesthetics, is there a certain formula that you use when you're evaluating aesthetics of a farmhouse or a residence?
It's basically, there's not a formula, there's experience and judgment in taking information from the market and the desires and demands of the market.
So in your opinion, does a chain link fence with three strands of barbed wire calculate within that formula as a good or a bad aesthetic?
Again, it depends on the entire project, where you have to look at the project as a whole, the setbacks as a whole, and the plantings in the project as a whole.
I'm just asking in regards to specifically if that fence is considered a negative or a positive as an aspect of that project as a whole?
In my opinion, certain market participants would probably prefer something other than chain lengths, but that becomes a taste evaluation as opposed to a white barn or a red barn or a black barn.
Fair enough. What percentage of your income is, annual income is based on creating hypothetical assessments for these renewable energy companies?
Objection to the form of the question, I don't know what hypothetical means. He's got the highest certification available for real estate appraisers.
He had made a statement.
Just a minute, I've got an objection pending, and I'm gonna help you out. Mr. Marus, what percentage of your income every year in round numbers is attributable to work appraising or determining the impact on property values of a proposed green energy development?
I don't look at it annually, but maybe over the last five years, it could be in the 15 to 20% range. That's just the general response, I've never tracked it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that question. Did you do the wind, the assessments for the local wind farms?
You keep saying assessments, and that's just not a word that is applicable to his testimony, Ms. Lawson. Do you mean appraisals?
Property valuation.
Don't interrupt me, please, I'm trying to help. Do you mean valuations or appraisals? Assessments are something done by a tax assessor.
I have not done any wind projects in Lee County.
Okay, I have no other questions, thank you.
Mr. Apple, are you there?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you've indicated multiple times that there are no comparable sites of this size. So would it be fair to say this is only your opinion with no real data to support that opinion on the property values?
Every appraisal is an opinion, it's not a guarantee, it's a professional opinion based on appraising 15 or 20 billion dollars of property, and it's a well-supported opinion, but that's what it is, an opinion.
So would it be fair to say that my opinion would be different than your opinion?
I have no idea what your opinion is. So I would say I can't answer that question.
Okay, so until there are comparables, we have no real data to go by, would that be correct?
That's not correct, because my report provides studies, it provides peer review, it provides analysis of the market, looking at the economic impact of the market, and it looks like And it looks like, uh, it, it, it reviews and analyzes historical data from assessors throughout the Midwest. So there's multiple data points that are analyzed. And I appraise unique properties all the time. That's what I'm paid to do based on my experience and judgment.
But again, you just referred to historical data to solar farms, which there is none to compare to this site. Would that be correct?
Uh, that's not correct.
Could you clarify that, please?
Please, I'm not sure what your question is.
You've said multiple times, there's no comparable data to solar farms of this size. Is that correct?
I, I object to the form of the question. I, I don't think that Mr. Marus testified about that. He said that there, there aren't, there is a sufficient number of sales around, uh, solar projects this size because frankly, they're, they're not built yet. I believe that was his testimony.
That may be it. He asked him, is that correct? And all Mr. Marus has got to say is yes or no.
Okay, thanks.
Is your question correct now?
Okay. Is it common for solar or wind companies to make payments or offer to buy homes of adjacent landowners to these types of projects?
It's not common, but I've, uh, seen it done. What's more common in my experience is to provide uh, some, some type of landscaping, uh, buffer uh, for screening purposes. Uh, in certain projects, there's good neighbor agreements and obviously there's lease payments. And a lot of times it depends on the county and it depends on the project.
Okay, understood. Uh, you indicated on the North Star project that they did buy the home that you used as a comparable. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, you also indicated earlier that you cannot get data from some areas due to flat sales markets. Could the fact of this be due to the solar project that nothing was being sold?
That's speculation. I can't answer the question.
Okay. That's it.
All right, thank you. And I see, listen, I'm missing, they also see no other raised hands. All right, I will recess tonight's session until tomorrow night, Wednesday, the ninth. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, sure. Mr. Marus, you can sign off.
Oh, and, and can I?
Tonight, six o'clock here in the old Lee County Courthouse, third floor courtroom. Yes, sir.
And could I ask to enter, uh, Mr. Marus's PowerPoint into?
You're done, done. Good. We'll see y'all then.
Thank you for staying. We have the, uh,